Thanks for watching, OCA.
Thanks for watching, OCA.
Thanks for watching, OCA.
Thanks for watching, OCA.
When it comes to making plans, you are the best. The same way you plan each detail for those moments, start planning to protect you and your loved ones from a natural disaster. Protecting your family is the best plan you can make.
Dan, I got five. Okay, everybody, get your mics.
All right.
They're on. All right, everybody, it is 5:00 on Tuesday, January 21st. And since our village president and president are, vice president are not here, I'm calling the meeting to order. And I'll call roll, and then we can select a chair. All right? Bashin? Higgins?
Here.
Manke?
Here.
Kirchdorfer?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
All right? And Peterson and Van Kampen are obviously absent. So would anybody like to volunteer to be the chair? All right. Turning it over to Tom Kirchdorfer.
Thank you. Item number three on the agenda, approval of the December 16th, 2024, and the January 6th, 2025 village board minutes. If correct, have resolution and a motion to, and a correction of any mistakes. Tim and Jason.
I would like to note, at least they're in the packet this time.
Right. So we're approving both sets. That was the motion for both sets. Tim?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We have your minutes approved. Public appearances, comments, and communications. This is part of the agenda, allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Are there any, is there anyone here tonight for public comments? Moving on then. Item number five, approval of vouchers in the amount of $8,64,353.8. Comments, questions? You have a motion to accept. Lynn?
Second.
And Tim is second. Do we have any discussion?
I just had a question. I saw $2,056 for newspaper subscriptions.
What number is it?
I didn't write that down, I'm sorry.
My guess, it's for the library.
Oh, yeah, that would make sense. That would make sense.
Five, two?
It looks like 1,0850 on page 21 of the packet.
I'm pretty sure that's a library expense.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments? Do you want me to finish this up, Amanda, and then you'll take it back over?
It's up to you, up to the board.
We have a motion on the floor right now, so. Any further discussion? I believe this is a roll call vote.
It is. All right, McDaniel? Yes? Peterson?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
And Higgins?
Yes.
And Amanda?
If you'd like me to take it back?
Yes, it's your job.
Okay, fabulous, thank you. Mike, thank you. Okay. So we're on number six, consent agenda. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Items as presented, this is item 6A through C on the agenda. Jason? Okay. And Tom? Okay. Excellent. Are there any questions? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
All five of you, right?
Yep. The five of us, yeah, because Carleen just got here. Okay. Item seven is reports of committees. Items are for discussion and/or possible action. 7A is the ad hoc public transportation committee. Item one under that is first amendment to calendar year 2023 program grant agreement for the Federal Transit Administration, Section 5304 statewide planning grant program to extend performance period one year to March 1st, 2026. Since I'm the chair of the committee, I'm just going to say we need to extend it a little bit, finishing up paperwork, and we'll get it done.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Just FYI?
No, this is, yeah, we have to, yeah, we have to make a motion for this.
I'll make a motion to approve requesting the grant extension to 2026.
Tim and Carleen, a second.
And Bashin, a second?
Yes. And you said, and the agreement?
Yeah.
We have to.
There's an agreement in the packet.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, nope, motion passes. That wasn't a no for me, that was a.
Got it.
No, I didn't see any noes, for the record. Okay. Item eight, unfinished business. Items are for discussion and/or possible action. 8A is review bids received for 2025 wastewater upgrades project, including the wastewater treatment plant, Richards Road lift station, and Rustic Vineyards lift station, and consider accepting bid and awarding contract for base bid and additive bid items to the lowest responsible bidder, Stab Construction Corporation, in the total amount of $23,647,046. Forty-six cents, huh? Can I get a motion in a second? Jason and Tom? Okay. And we have, remind me your name.
Ben.
Ben, here.
You want to start? You want me to?
Sure, I'll start. So we did finally take bids on the Elephant Project in the room, the wastewater treatment plant, and we did receive five bids from qualified bidders. They were generally ranging from good to really, really good. So we're very happy with them. Ben is the expert here, and he's here to provide any information, any context that you guys might like to see.
Yeah, so I'll just quickly go through kind of what we saw and what all is included in here, just so you have some interpretation of what's in your packets, and then if you guys have questions, I'm happy to answer them. But big picture, as is described here, this is both for the treatment plant as well as work at the Richards Road lift station and the Rustic Vineyards lift station. So when you're looking at the bid proposal form, or the bid tab, bid item one relates to specifically things that are at either the wastewater treatment plant or the Rustic Vineyards lift station, which the Rustic Vineyards lift station is a very minor component of that. And then bid item two is those items relating to the Richards Road lift station, which is a complete replacement of that lift station. Within the bid form itself, there are also a variety of other tables. One of them you'll read about is supplemental bid items, which would be included in the recommended award. Those items are things that are not specifically within the contract, but are, there is a unit price to be used if unforeseen conditions are found. So the best working example is you dig a hole, you figure out, hey, I got bad soils here, rather than us coming back to you guys for a change order, it has a pre-negotiated unit price with a pre-negotiated amount in the contract that we can authorize the contractor to dig out those bad soils, put in a proper soil, so that you don't have to, you know, delay the project because of things like that. So that's what supplemental bid items are. Then there is, I'm actually going to just open my copy here. There is, as you look at the bid tab, which, within your packets, is the one that has the finer light, finer writing, and lots and lots of numbers on it. There's a Schedule A, just so you understand what that is. That would be how we selected all of the equipment for the project. That schedule lists what the base bid equipment was that we required. So any of those items that are listed there, we had a specific preference when selecting that equipment. The engineer designated alternate column is an alternate price that the contractor is allowed to provide for pre-approved vendors. And then the optional alternate column is, Bob's your uncle came and said, I can provide a generator. Here's a deduct for that generator. So it allows the contractor to write in, you know, no name or unlisted vendors within here. Ultimately, through the recommendation, we aren't recommending any of those be pursued. There were a couple of them that were relatively minor deducts. The generator specifically is recommended to stick with Cummins because that is what the rest of the village equipment is, and what you get, your mechanic is familiar with working on. And then the other ones were such minor cost deducts that the village preference or staff preference on equipment was the direction that was recommended to go. So that's all within there. And then the Schedule B, as you're looking at it, that's those supplemental bid items that I described. And then Schedule C is two additive bid items that we bid that we are recommending be awarded. Those were included in there because they weren't necessary for the scope of the project, but in the long run will help the village, but didn't want to include them as base bids since it wasn't part of the original budget of the project. Ultimately, all of the bid, or the low bid, and actually the two lowest bids, came in a good amount below budget. So we are recommending that all of the additive bid items be pursued. And again, Lauren pointed out, they are pre-qualified. Bidders, Stab is a company that has done work in the village before, and we've done a lot of work with, and have no concerns whatsoever on awarding to them. So we are recommending award of the full scope of the project, including additive bid items C1 and C2.
Any questions? Tim?
Yeah, could you, either Ben or Lauren, just sort of go over why we're doing this? What's the benefit to the village for doing this? And, you know, why should the taxpayers say, yay, we're spending $21 million?
Do you want to start, or you want me to go?
I'm actually going to send this one right over to Ben. This all started with a facilities plan that predated me. I believe it was in 2020. And Ben led that effort. So why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, so as Lauren mentioned, we did a facilities plan in 2020. And what the facilities plan was, is a comprehensive 20-year evaluation. Looks at population projections, looks at condition of the existing facilities, and how is the village going to accommodate, you know, being a growing community, and how do you continue to treat wastewater into the years to come? Through that study, there were four total phases of improvement recommended. The first phase was done in 2021. That was the blower project, and that was specifically related to replacing aging infrastructure, things that dated back to the 80s that were still in operation at the treatment plant, and really are the heart blood of the treatment plant. This is, we called that Phase Zero. Phase One now is what's part of this, and this is meant to both address age-related deficiencies and capacity. So as the community has grown, you had some deficiencies in terms of total flow with the treatment plant. So this is addressing those, and then also kind of setting yourself up for future proofing the treatment facility. So predominantly, at this point, we're working on the liquid side of the treatment facility. And then the last thing that is addressed within this was the village historically had not disinfected your wastewater. That is being voluntarily pursued by the village, and I think that decision was made three or four years ago, if I'm not mistaken. It was in the old building, I remember, because we did not have these nice facilities to talk about that one in. But that was the last component of this that was elected to be added by the village. Phase Two, just for reference, is solids treatment. That was proposed for about five years from now, that we'd be having this conversation again. And then Phase Three is another capacity upgrade that, for those of you that were on the board, may remember, we're hoping we never need, because you guys do such a phenomenal job fixing up your collection system, but that was basically related to clear water leaking into the sanitary sewer, that if you can eliminate via work on your collection system, you would never need Phase Three. So my hope for you is you never need Phase Three.
Thank you.
Can I tack something on before I go to you, Tom? Being a board member who was on the board in 2020, I also just want to say that we had several options to pick from about how we were going to proceed with our wastewater. And there was also a much more expensive option to hook into the Madison Sewerage District, and the board opted to not take that much more expensive option that would have taken a long time, been very complicated, had to lay pipe all the, through Fitchburg, and it was a big deal. And so this is the cheaper of those options. Okay. Go ahead, Tom.
Just as far as, this needs to be, I know this is a multi-generational kind of project that we're going to fund through borrowing. I guess, what is the timing on payments? When is it actually going to impact our borrowing and the timing of those distributions? I don't know if we know that exactly, or how far we've looked?
I can hit on some of that, and then if anyone else wants to add. So the treatment plant itself is being paid, or we applied for clean water fund loans, so it'll be funded through a 30-year borrowing through the DNR, through their state revolving fund, which comes with a subsidized interest rate. I think right now it's around two and three quarters. Richards Road was hoped to be paid for via that. That, actually, this year was the first time in clean water fund history that they ran out of money. Not necessarily because they ran out of money, they actually ran out of bonding capacity. So the, we are anticipating that that will be applied for again this coming September. And we're hoping, and if you have any opportunities to talk to your state representatives, you should encourage them to increase the bonding capacity for DNR, because we're hoping that that's what they do for the coming year. So that'll be paying for Richards Road. You guys also have quite a bit of cash on hand in the sewer utility. And then lastly, Oak Hill will be paying for their portion of both Richards Road and the treatment facility, since they are a contract user, and the contract that the village has with Oak Hill Correctional requires that they pay for their proportionate share. So off the top, I believe it's about 5% that they're paying for the treatment plants, and around 50% that they're paying for Richards Road.
Lynn?
Thank you. That was all very helpful. I have two things. So Tom touched on this, but I think it's helpful to say it out loud, especially for people who don't live in this world. This investment gives us how much time? I mean, you said multi-generational. How, how much of a capacity would we have to get to? How many years down the road would we be talking about what this gives us?
So the population projection for Phase One and Phase Two is 16,000 people. So Amanda may remember this. When we were doing the facilities plan, DNR does require that you work off of DOA population projections. At that time, DOA was projecting Oregon's population being just over 12,000 people, which was pre-census data coming out. Obviously, since the census, that is very likely to happen quite a bit quicker than 20 years from now. So we did successfully argue at that point that the village's comprehensive plan should be followed, which is where the 16,000 comes from. So the regulations require that we plan for 20 years. That doesn't necessarily mean that things are going to last for 20 years. In general, you would assume that concrete or structures that you construct are more in the 60- to 100-year lifespan, depending on what exactly their uses are. Underground piping, again, that's 60- to 100-year lifespan. Electrical equipment, I think if you looked at a depreciation table, is probably in 10 to 15 years. And that's about what people are seeing these days. So there will be, and then mechanical equipment is in the 15- to 20-year range. So there will be age-related things, but from a capacity standpoint, you know, the on paper is 16,000. Now that said, some of the decisions that were made five or six years ago, that you guys have inherited, are the village board decided to go with a little bit more expensive route. They did not choose the lowest-cost option when we were going through the facilities plan. So we didn't go to Madison, which was the highest-cost option, but there was an intent to do as much future-proofing as possible. So for those of you that have done tours, some of the tanks that we are abandoning are being left in place to create future capacity. We also, as a part of the design, have laid out kind of what anticipated future regulations are, you know, likely future regulations, and how you can accommodate those at the treatment facility. So while it doesn't mean that you're not going to construct anything in the next, you know, 20 to 30 years, you do have quite a bit of future-proofing for future regulations within that as well. And along with those future regulations comes additional population beyond 16,000 people.
That was a great answer.
Yeah, wow.
That was an outstanding answer.
You walked him right into that.
I know. Well done. And then my second thing, because this is what I'm known for, I just have to say it out loud, it's coming in under our projections. Now, when we're talking about this high of a number, you know, 1 to 2 million is, I get, not a ton, although it feels like a lot. So I just wanted to thank both of you and your teams for the work that you've done to prepare us for this, prepare our capital plan for this. And I think, at the end of the day, help us understand that true investment that this is, and that it's not glamorous, but it is essential, and it is, like you said, really forward-looking into what the village might need and preparing for that.
Anyone else? Okay, I think we're ready. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't think anyone's opposed. I'm going to stop asking that unless somebody clearly is. Okay, and then 8B, this is a task order number 25 with Town and Country Engineering Incorporated for Wastewater Treatment Facility Administration and Resident Engineering Professional Services at a cost not to exceed $1,701,000. So motion to approve. Tim and Jason? Okay. And any questions on this? And if there's anything you want to say about?
So our previous contracts that we've presented to you guys carried us through bidding, so this is to continue providing services through the construction project. So the construction administration number is there for the purposes of all of the coordination with the contractor. So it'll be submittal review, pay request review, presentation to that information to you guys. Any questions, comments, whatnot between the village and the contractor? And then the resident engineering will be a nearly full-time person on site for the duration of the project, which right now is anticipated to be just over two years.
Any questions? Okay, so, oh, go ahead, please.
Just to provide a little bit of outside context here, my experience, granted, in much smaller projects, mostly street projects, is that design is always very glamorous, and construction inspection is often the less noticed younger brother of the design process. That said, it's the place where it is most easy to really start spiraling. And that's why it is so important, an investment in projects, especially ones this big, to have a really solid construction inspection and observation team, as well as a really solid contract administration team. Because this is where the big dollars are here, and you've got to have those eyes. In the three years I've been here, Town and Country has been a wonderful and invaluable partner on this project. They've been the right people for this job, and I think I can speak for the entire Village Public Works team that there's nobody that we would rather undertake this two-year journey with. So I'd highly recommend this investment in the project.
Thanks, Lauren.
Cool. So let's take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Looks good, thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Appreciate it. All right. Number nine on the agenda is new business. 9A is village board public outreach program proposal for 2025 winter-spring calendar of events.
Yeah, so I'll speak on this. So what you're looking at in the packet is a proposed calendar of events, wide-ranging for this series. And one thing to note before we get started into some of these things, this is separate from the referendum promotion calendar. So although that is obviously very much going to be part of village board outreach, this is the calendar of events that we will primarily own in order to outreach. So this Sunday is the Senior Center Pancake Breakfast, quick plug. The village board outreach table, we're proposing that that be set up to help answer questions and promote village programs. We have Winter Fest, which is put on by the Oregon Wellness Coalition. I believe LeAnn is going to be there already with a craft thing, so we just have to show up and talk to parents, which is ideal. Then, the next three things, so this is a very loose calendar. It actually came together yesterday, so I can send you the actual schedule of events. But Chief Paganoff and I have been working together to provide what I think is going to be a really exciting and timely series of community discussions. So we are going to partner with the village outreach program, the Oregon Police Department, and the Oregon School District to provide three very specific safety series sessions. One being targeted towards our business leaders in the community. Second one being parents and families. It can be families within the district or outside of the district. If you don't have kids yet in the district, or your kids don't go to this district, that's still, we're going to talk about the community aspects as well. And then the last one will be for residents or community members. So again, if you don't necessarily have a child or a person in the district, but want to ask questions or get information, that would be a great session. Or obviously going to promote that through the senior center and some other avenues, if we can. So I actually have dates for those, and I can send those out. Really, what we're looking for here is sort of an approval of the safety series, and sort of what that will entail. We would love to have the village board there to sort of represent. We won't necessarily be answering questions or any of that, but just facilitating and being there to support these two entities. I then partnered with the library. They were gracious enough to open their space to us for three Saturdays for a quick listening and learning opportunity. So we'd set up the table in the lobby. Two of these Saturdays are Storytime Saturdays, so hoping to... Two of these Saturdays are Storytime Saturdays, so hoping to catch parents who may have questions for us specifically about things going on in the village, or the referendum, or any other questions they may have. And then lastly, we partnered with the Chamber to put together some things. So, the Chamber is doing a business expo here in the evening, so we're going to do, we're going to greet and sort of be a face for that. And then on the next page, if you can scroll down for me, there's a couple of member connect sessions that we want to attend. The March one, actually Green Box Composting, who we've partnered with for our food composting program, is going to be the main presenter. So, we're going to be there with a sustainability committee to be the voice of the village there. But then on May fifteenth, we're looking for someone to go. The Chamber has sort of asked for some village updates, and I think it's a good way for us to stay connected to that business community and help them understand what's going on. And then April twenty-sixth, we have an Earth Day event, still kind of to be decided as far as timing goes, but it's well-attended. I was there last year. They're very supportive of the village, and I think it would be a great way for us to represent ourselves there as well. So, that's what I came up with. Happy to take suggestions of other ideas, events that you may have, or move right along with what we've got here.
There's a Taste of Oregon coming up, right?
Yes.
Not sure when that is.
Rotary.
Rotary.
It is through the Rotary. I attended last year, and it was a bit more focused on like food services, like the small business that provide food services. So, I didn't quite know if that was the appropriate venue for us to be there for. I'm happy to reach out to Rotary, though, and see if they'd be interested.
Is it fundraiser?
It is a fundraiser for Rotary.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have, I have a, I'm assuming that these safety series are interspersed with the other dates, since they probably are not going to all be between February first and eighth.
No, but they are going to be quite tight. March is going to be a busy month for the village outreach program. I believe the first session is March sixth, and then March eleventh and March eighteenth. So, we have like the sixth for safety series, and then the eighth for listening and learning, and then the eleventh for a safety series, and then the thirteenth for Spring Expo. So, clear your calendars, folks, because we're going to be going to a lot of things.
Okay.
Do we need a motion, or?
I'll make a motion to approve the outreach program proposal.
Tim and Carleen, is that a second? Okay. All right. So, any other questions? All right. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay.
Thanks for doing this, Lynn.
You'll get a sign-up genius tonight.
All right.
All right. Nine B is the Village Administrator Annual Performance Evaluation Review Process.
I believe I added this to the agenda, so I just, last year, I got kind of caught by surprise. I had never experienced this before, and it was, it was like, so this is what this is about. Last year, we actually started it on March sixteenth, and we had to have it back and evaluated and summarized by April first. And that was a little tight. And I, and I think then, then after that, then based on that evaluation, then we wound up actually in a negotiation until May twentieth. So, I was hoping to maybe get out ahead of a little bit. We also, in doing last year's process, a number of people in completing the form of either felt they couldn't complete a section because they didn't, didn't have any experience reviewing a particular segment. And I guess this would be an alt, between now and when we would start the process, there'd be opportunities to review and make suggestions to the evaluation form. Right now, my suggestion would be to begin the process and complete any revisions by March, the March third village board meeting. And then having the form returned by the twenty-fourth, and I'd give a week to summarize and tabulate for the April third village board meeting. And I guess I would also take input on the value, the summarization. Last year, it was just, here's all the comments, here's the total of the scores and so forth. So, I could do the same thing again, or we can.
Could you say those dates again?
Yeah, exactly.
So, we would, we would be, so the, we would take revisions and changes to the process until March third. And then from March third until March twenty-fourth, we would gather those. And then on the April third, we would meet and review the summary.
Can I ask them a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Carleen.
So, do you want any kind of revisions before March third?
Yes.
So that it can be implemented on March?
Right. So, March third would be, would work to?
So, what's your date, then, for when you want any kind of revision suggestions?
I would say we want to approve them on, on the March third date, so we could start putting those together at any time between now and March third.
So, solidify the process by March third.
Right.
I'm still not clear. So, if you want to be able to approve the process on March third, don't you need to have what, what it is that we're approving prior to March third and then present it? So, what's the date that you want anything that you would present on March third for us to approve? Like February twenty-eighth?
Sure.
Twenty-first, because the packet would be due on the twenty-sixth.
Yeah. So, Friday, February twenty-first, we'll say, revisions due.
Wednesday is the packet date.
Yeah, Wednesday is.
Right. But that gives Tom some time to take revisions and get something to do by Wednesday.
By Wednesday.
I'm a slow worker.
Six, whatever that is. I've noticed.
So, by February twenty-first.
So, February twenty-first.
It's a good thing we're all friends.
Any changes? And that gives you time to ask questions if it's not clear?
Sure.
Okay. Got it. That's what I needed. Thank you.
I hadn't backed it into that, far into the process. Thank you for that.
Yeah. I was just like, okay, if we're going to approve it, then, guys, we'll be here like hours talking about it.
Okay.
We don't want to do that.
So, I'm, I have questions about the backend now. So, so we get the process and the everything approved at the March third meeting, then we?
As soon as the March third meeting over, be distributed to everybody to begin completing evaluation form and to submit it.
And to submit by March twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Okay.
And that, and then we'd give a week then to summarize and tabulate and do whatever we wanted as a summary document.
Gotcha. All right. I'm clear. Everybody clear? Okay. Good. Do, I don't, do we need action on this? I think we kind of just reached.
Do we need to approve that timeline?
Yeah, maybe approving that timeline?
Sure.
How about that? Okay. So, I need a motion to approve the timeline Tom just laid out. I see Jason, and I'll do Carleen. Yeah. All right. Perfect. So, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Good.
Thanks for getting ahead of this, Tom.
Yeah. Yeah. That's great. My nose is blowing, obviously blowing my nose. Sorry. I'm like, all of a sudden, I'm like congested. Okay. Number ten is reports of village officers, department heads, and consultants. This is informational only. No action by the village board will be taken. The reports are in the meeting packet. Ten A is the Village Administrator Report. Are there any questions about that? Okay. Then, let's see. Ten B is the Director of Finance Report. Village cash balances ending November twenty-two-four and twenty-two-four year-end building permits, connection fees, and impact fees collected. Are there any questions on those?
It looks like it cut off the balance of the total.
At the bottom. It doesn't give. Sorry about that. Okay. Cut off at the bottom, you said? Yeah. There should be a total. Okay. Column at the very bottom, and it's not there. Oh.
Same place the minutes are.
Do you have it in front of you? Do you, can you tell us the total?
Okay.
So, which page are we looking at?
Yeah.
Eighty-six.
I see a total.
I think it's supposed to be underneath.
Oh.
Oh.
Eighty-six, okay.
So, the total, the total is twenty-five million, eight hundred seventeen thousand, four hundred thirty-nine. Okay. And that's at the bottom of page eighty-six? That's what we're looking at?
I'm sorry, that's the December one, and that one I don't have reconciled yet.
Okay.
November actually is twenty-five million, eight hundred eleven, seven hundred and seventy.
Okay.
I didn't have any of the detail in there for December, and that's why the numbers seem really close.
Gotcha. Okay. Questions? Okay. Then we'll move on from that to number?
Amanda, I did have one.
I'm sorry.
That doesn't have a memo here in the packet. Just wanted to keep you guys updated on our downtown master plan, since we talked about potentially having that here in January. At the January Planning Commission meeting, our consultants reviewed kind of their final draft with the planning commission and got just a bit of feedback, some more sections they wanted them to flesh out a little bit. One was kind of more specific design guidelines for especially new construction that would kind of be integrated with historic architecture, so a little bit more nuts and bolts of what should we expect things to look like, and how can we kind of help guide developers to create spaces that look like the way we want them to? And then also just kind of summarizing sort of our vision statement, more or less, for the downtown plan in a more kind of clear and concise way at the top of the report. So, I met with them after the meeting just to make sure we were all on the same page about what was meant by the comments. And so, I expect I'll probably later this week get a final, final, final draft review from them, and expect that to be February Planning Commission meeting reviewed. And if they're good to go with it, then we'll have that on the February twenty-first village board meeting. So, that's still rolling along, but just keeping you in the loop.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
I just have one announcement, and I'll make it brief, but I know this conversation's existing in a lot of communities. There are a lot of options out there, especially after the walk shop parade, as far as mobile barriers that can be put out at parade routes or other events that essentially stop vehicles. It's been a very competitive market, which is good and bad for us. The good in it is, is the options are getting better. And so, just wanted to make all of you aware, we're ahead of it. We're going to be filing for as many grants as we can find to purchase a mobile care, mobile barrier kit. They're incredibly expensive. The other challenge is moving them, even though they are mobile, they are very difficult to move. We have a great partnership with Public Works. They're amazing people. I know they'll, they'll help us out, too. That's in the works. I'm really hoping we can get something purchased before our June event, but that's just a quick update on that. We're, we're working on it.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you for being on top of that.
Anyone else? Okay. Now, we can move on. Item eleven is announcements and miscellaneous business. Eleven A is announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events, and miscellaneous business. Board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body shall occur. And I'll start with the eleven A one, the pancake breakfast. Do you want to talk about that, Rachel?
I think it'll be warmer than it was today.
Let's hope.
Come on out and join us. The local VFW guys do a great job of putting breakfast on for us. It's a fun fundraiser, and we also have the bake sale going on, so you can come in and have breakfast and pick up something for later on Sunday morning as well. Look forward to seeing y'all.
Just for anyone listening at home, I'm just going to read the details. It's Pancake Breakfast and Bake Sale on Sunday, January twenty-sixth, serving from seven-thirty a.m. to eleven-thirty a.m. at the Oregon Area Senior Center. Okay. Number two here is the Senior Center Drug Takeback Event on Wednesday, February fifth, from one p.m. to two p.m. Anything there, Rachel?
Well, this is really a partnership among a bunch of community organizations that happens to be being held at the Senior Center, but it's, it's really the brainchild of the Oregon Sustainability Committee, the Oregon Police Department, and the Oregon Area Care Coalition. It's an opportunity for people to come and learn something about why it's important to have medications properly disposed of, and it's an opportunity to bring some of those medications and have them disposed of. So, that's February fifth from one to two at the Senior Center. Call us if you've got any questions.
Okay. Any, I guess, can we do other announcements now, right? Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
I just want to let you know that the DEI committee did not meet on the ninth because we didn't have quorum, and that has been rescheduled till this Thursday evening at the People's United Methodist Church in the Fireside Room at six-thirty. And Amanda's coming to talk about transportation.
Yay. Okay. Anybody else? Announcements? Go ahead, Lynn.
Well, I was trying to do a shout-out, and so today, I wanted to give a shout-out to the Public Works team, because it was cold today, and I didn't have to go outside and work, and I'm sure they did. And I also am imagining you're watching for any pipes and things like that. And so, one of those things we don't often think about until it's a problem, and just glad that you guys are there for us when we need it.
Can I piggyback on that and say thank you? And also give a shout-out to our water utility manager, Don Gray, who texted at about seven-thirty this morning, saying he was on his way actually over to the city of Verona. They had a pipe main break, and they do not have a device we call a correlator, which helps locate it. So, when you're going into one of these main breaks without one, you're kind of going blind. And especially on days like today, that is a very bad thing. So, he went over and worked with their staff to show them how this works and to find the break, and it turned out it was within five feet of where he found it. And he's been talking to them about how to get their own and getting them trained up. So, working with these surrounding communities to try to help and build those relationships.
That's great.
Excellent. Okay. And we are to eleven B, future agenda items. This item gives village board members the opportunity to place a topic on a future agenda for discussion and/or potential action, but we can't, we can only discuss where to put it, not details about it. So, anybody have anything? Carleen?
I'm just wondering, and maybe this is something that's already in the policy book, and I don't know it, so if that's the case, so be it. Just wondering if there's any kind of policy for committees of the board to have a column in the Oregon Observer? So, the DEI committee is thinking that they, that we would like to have a column in the Observer. I couldn't find any ordinance about it, and if there is one, please tell me where it is, and if not, can we discuss it at a future meeting?
So, we'll put that?
Not specifically.
Okay. We'll put it on a future agenda. Awesome. Anybody else have anything? Okay. I'm not seeing anything, so without objection, we are adjourned.